Acknowledge you. If that's not working, just go back to the old school way of doing this, and I'll recognize you as well. Holly will be controlling the microphone. Someone's changing the screens. So when you're changing those screens, it's really affecting the view that I'm getting. So I just, I'm not for sure if anyone's doing that, but it keeps changing what I'm able to see. But I'll do my best to make sure that I recognize everyone as we move forward. Okay, so the first item we have is a roll call.
Okay, Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Veho?
Here.
Counselor Carson?
Here.
Counselor Daniel?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Present.
All counselors present and the quorum has been declared.
Okay, good. Alright, so the first item we have is the agenda approval. Would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion. Oh, second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, alright, thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is, this is the segment of the agenda where we have citizen comments. If we have anyone on the phone who would like to make a comment, I ask that you state your name, and then when you start your comment, I also will start a clock that I have here. And the clock is for three minutes. If you're still speaking within that three, by the time that three minutes is up, I will ask you to end the conversations at that time. Holly, do we have anyone who wants to participate under citizen comments at this time?
Um, I don't see anybody raising their hand, but I did see Shanae Diaz. She had raised her hand and I think she lowered it, so I'm gonna allow her to talk and see if she does want to speak.
Okay, Shanae, go ahead.
It's, it's not unmuting her. Brandon, can you try to unmute her? Oh, Shanae, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I think that worked. So I, I just wanted to say it's okay. I, I didn't mean to raise my hand, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that was the only hand I saw raised.
Okay, alright, well seeing that we have no one else who would like to make any citizen comments, I will now move on to the next item on the agenda, and we have a consent calendar A. Anyone like to make a motion? Okay, we have Counselor Veho?
I move that we approve consent counter A.
Check it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Holly, will you take the vote?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, up next, we have on the regular business, business brought forward by the city staff, second reading and public hearing ordinance number six dash twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor. As you will probably recall from the first reading, the primary purpose of this ordinance is twofold. One is to pro, to provide a process in our code of ordinances for how we pursue restitution in cases in front of the municipal judge. And the second is to make that process mirror the process that is set forth in state statute for pursuing restitution in state courts, county and district courts of the state of Colorado. That is what this provision does pursuant to authority that is already in the code of ordinances. One thing I wanted to point out, I, I sent an email about this early this afternoon, but pursuant to comments from Holly and her staff as well as from Judge McDonald, I have made a few changes to the ordinance from the way it was presented in first reading. And I don't, let me just briefly touch on what those were. There's some, primarily some wording changes that I'm not gonna go through. Some of that wording change is more substantive and was to take out references that the state code had to, uh, pain and suffering, uh, suffering and hardship, which are not compensable in restitution. So references to that just kind of confused things. And then some simplifying some of the interest calculations and holding off interest on restitution if people are paying pursuant to an approved payment plan that is no longer than six months in duration. Pulling out some of the things that could be covered in restitution that the state had that we didn't feel were appropriate in unique court, such as government service animal costs, government and private investigation costs. Uh, and I think most significantly, insurers being able essentially to go after a subrogation claim as a restitution claim. Any kind of insurance subrogation claim would certainly be open to an insurance company in civil court, but we didn't want to open those doors in, um, in municipal court. That was the judge's main, uh, main input there. So with that, it, it, those are the, the highlight of the changes between this second reading and the first reading. And that's all I've got unless you've got questions for me. We do need a public hearing on this.
Okay, thank you, Eric. So what we would do at this time, we would open it up for a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number six dash twenty twenty. If there's anyone on the phone, uh, on the Zoom, feel free to make your comments at this time. Holly, do you see anyone?
I did not see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, alright, being that no one is making any comments, I would now close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Counsel? Looks like you have your, um, hand up. So Counselor Grego's, um, phone is highlighted, like he wants to, um, talk. Is he unmuted?
He's unmuted.
Hello?
Go ahead, Counsel Grego.
No, I, I, if there's no further questions, I was, I was ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay, please do.
If there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion. We pass ordinance number six twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Alright, if not, Holly, please take the vote.
Okay, Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is similarly to fill a little bit of a hole that we have discovered in our code of ordinances, in particular with respect to abuse of the nine-one-one system. We have had police officers write up tickets under our current existing code on, on false reporting, or situations that are when people call in nine-one-one and they don't really have an emergency, like they call nine-one-one. As I used in the communication, we've had an example of calling nine-one-one to have the officers come turn down their heat. Or, uh, you know, newspapers have reported other towns with nine-one-one calls to please, please bring them a pizza. We do have a policy of responding to all nine-one-one calls. And I discussed that with the chief prior to thinking about drafting this ordinance. And he's got solid reasons for wanting to continue that policy, which does open the city up to cost and aggravation when we do respond to those nine-one-one calls. As our current ordinance is written, our current ordinance for false reporting is written, there is, that, that is not a false reporting situation. False reporting is when you claim that a crime has been committed when you know that it really hasn't, or you give false identification to a police officer, something like that. So we need something that is, that is directed to the kind of abuse of the nine-one-one system that we're seeing, um, to discourage that kind of abuse. And that's what this ordinance does. It mirrors to some extent, uh, an abuse of nine-one-one segment in the Colorado revised statutes, section eighteen dash eight dash one eleven. But that is directed, I think, to more serious violations that include false reporting of an emergency under extraordinary risk factors, like there's someone pulling a gun on me or something like that. We add to that something that is not in the state statutes, and that's sort of the garden variety nine-one-one to have the officers come turn down heat or something like that. That is what this ordinance does.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. Okay, I'll bring it back to, um, council for any discussion. And if we don't have any discussion, I'll take a motion that will move forward. Is anyone?
I have a question. It's still, um, it does, it, this is still respective of, of what the officer thinks at the moment, or, I mean, what, I, I know some instances, I guess, um, I'm just trying to understand if it, if it's a black and white, uh, list of offend, of like fines or something that if the officer deems this wasn't an emergency, you know, is, is this, I guess, is the crime, the, the punishment the same for all? Or is there a level of severity, I guess?
Yeah, there, there, as with all of our ordinance violations, there is no levels, really. They're just, it's an ordinance violation. So we don't have misdemeanors and felonies and things like that. This does not set forth a particular fine. So that would be in the judge's discretion, and the judge would, would, uh, use his discretion, I think, appropriately to make the, make the punishment sit the crime.
That's what I was looking for, was discretionary. So you're right. I get it. I'm sorry.
Do we have any other comments?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pass on first reading ordinance ten dash twenty twenty, revising provisions governing false reporting to mirror state code and include prohibit, prohibitions on abuse of nine-one-one emergency calls.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Should he set it for the public hearing, uh, for what date?
Yeah, April fifteenth.
And I'm sorry. Oh, no. No, we don't have to set it for a public hearing if we approve, right?
You have to.
Oh, yeah.
Now we do a second reading in a public hearing on April fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, discussion. Ms. Holly, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Up next on the agenda, we have an update on the COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Holly's bringing up the document that we're gonna follow along with, my request is, I've, I've got a lot of information I'm gonna go over. I know that there's at least one topic that council's going to want to discuss in regards to the golf course. There's probably some also, some questions that the overview is gonna raise, and there's potentially stuff we didn't even think of that, that you wanted to ask and discuss. And so, um, as we scroll down, um, the important thing is there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes. I don't think the public nor council might be aware of how many different phone calls city staff are covering. A lot of us have our leadership type phone calls or email lists that are sending a lot of information as well. So for example, on the city manager listserv, especially right after the governor's comes out with an order, there's a lot of emails going on, on what the interpretation is and what cities are doing, and, and those types of things, similar to, um, for city clerks and city attorneys. Parks and rec, the professionals in that field have had a lot of emails going on and, and those types of things. This list here is just to give you a few examples. Some of these are daily calls. Some of them are weekly, um, and some are two times a week. So there's just, there's a lot of coordination from an emergency management perspective that's going on. Holly, if you want to scroll down a little bit, um, so in a quick summary of the facilities that are closed, city hall and library, recreation center, the multipurpose facility, the golf course, which we can talk about at the end here, playgrounds, park pavilions, and then the police station in regards to walk-in visitors. So if someone called and needed to be seen, they can take those types of things, but the, the doors are locked for walk-in visitors. The facilities that are open are parks and trails, dog parks. We do have some porta-potties in the parks until we're able to open up the bathrooms. We do plan on opening the bathrooms. We also had a hand washing station at city hall, and it's either still there or because we were done with the remodeling of the city hall bathrooms, those might be open. So I'm not sure if we cut over today or if it might be in the next few days. But at some point, we will remove the hand washing station because the bathrooms on the outside of city hall have been, um, remodeled, vandal-proofed, and will be open to the public. We had been investigating the potential for a portable shower. It's not as if we can just roll in this magical shower that's all-inclusive and takes care of itself. It adds to, you have to fill it with water. You have to have someone who's disposing of the water. And you need to have it to where it's being sanitized after every single use, which means we would essentially need to have staff person dedicated to make sure that was getting done. Obviously, if, if, you know, these were needs, that we would, we would keep looking at them. We did get information, though, that there is a church that might be opening up their showers for this purpose. And, um, the fire chief has, you know, indicated that's great as long as you're meeting the CDC requirements, and they think they can. So, um, as long as that's moving forward, we're putting this back on the back burner, given the complexity of, of what it would take to, to do the shower unit. So then, what I'm next gonna go through is some of the different departments. So for public works, we have streets, sanitation, utilities, fleet, facilities, and building inspection divisions are all still reporting to work. But again, it's important to know that we've modified. There's been some shift adjustments. There's also been adjustments to how they are traveling, as far as how many would be in a vehicle. We've reduced the use of common areas and, and those types of things. So while we might have people reporting to work, we are taking as much precautions as we can to protect our employees. Planning and administration functions are mostly working from home. This is a big bullet for the next one, and you may want to discuss it at the end. At this point in time, for the Streets Trust Fund, we are still planning to move forward with First Street. Construction was one of those areas that was still allowed. And we're feeling that if the, the contractor feels they can do it in a safe manner, that it would be important. It's a local contractor, and it's about a one-point-six-million-dollar contract. So, um, it's, it's a pretty big deal. We are, um, gonna need to make sure we're being careful with our messaging. This is not money that we could use for any other type of purpose. So we could not take this money and put it towards our response for COVID. It is legally restricted for those streets that were listed and approved through the, the most recent election that we just had. So given that it's a local contractor and that they will be taking the precautions, we felt that it was important to still move forward with First Street. Additionally, if we think that it, there could be a fifteen percent cost of construction between this year and next year, it also means that we can get more done on First Street than if we wait another year type of situation. I will say, and you'll see this when we get down to finance, we are going to be watching closely what ourselves tax collections look like. So I know previously we had indicated we're going as far as Bell. That may not be possible. It's unfortunate that this is happening at all as far as the COVID nineteen, but it's unfortunate that it's happening the very first year that this tax is in place because it means we have no fund balance in this tax. So there was no cushion for us to take any type of hit. So we will be watching the sales tax collection closely to see how far we can get on First Street. We also want to make sure we get the plans created for state and Victoria so that that way we're meeting our commitment for all areas of our community on the, the priority of these streets getting done. And so that stuff will still be happening. The other thing that I think was extremely important for a council was the housing needs assessment study. We are still planning to move forward with that. And, um, I think just yesterday or the day before, we submitted our grant application to DOLA. So we are, um, hopeful that we will be successful with that. In public works, and we are getting this information submitted to the proper people, we do need some protective equipment, but I'm, you're gonna see this under several areas. I want to make sure that we are a hundred percent clear. We realize that some of our needs for protective equipment are not at the same level as our healthcare professionals and some of the other professions that are on the front line. And right now, they don't have the equipment and protective equipment that they need. So while I'm still listing it, it's, it's not a comparison perspective. It's just to note that that is something that we're waiting for as well. And so Holly, if you wanted to move down some. Parks, recreation and library, um, parks and golf maintenance are still reporting, although with many modifications. So they are gonna have to mow. They are gonna have to pick up the trash. They are gonna have to do those things that we do, um, in our parks to make sure that those facilities, um, don't become dilapidated, essentially. But again, we're taking a lot of precautions to limit the interaction. Recreation and library staff are mostly working from home. Montana's old park and mom trail are still moving forward. In parks, recreation and library, we also need protective equipment. And as a little side note, one of our library employees sewed tin face masks for staff. So, um, we love our staff. Holly, if you want to scroll down a little. For police officers, they're obviously still reporting to work. Again, we've made some modifications. Administrative positions are on staggered schedules, so we only have one administrative person in the office at one time. We have seen, um, an increase in the number of property crimes. It was estimated at about eighteen percent. We, we feel there is a relationship, um, with the types of felonies that the jail is taking at this point in time. And again, it's important for us to be clear, when you have something like a jail and, and if you get one person who tests positive and how quickly that can spread. So this isn't something to say we think the jail should be doing something differently, but we also have to recognize that there are some outcomes when people are released that are normally within jail. And so there are individuals that we've, we've ticketed, but they would normally be in jail, but at this point, they're not because it's a non-violent felony. So for example, we had someone steal a car, um, and then the next few days, they stole a car again, type of thing. And so there is, there is an impact, but that's not to say that there should have been different decisions being made on who's in jail or not. The other issue is, um, when officers are encountering some of these felony offenses that are not violent, instead of doing the normal ticketing or to take them to jail, they're having to, um, do the long form, which takes a lot more time. So there's actually a bigger workload on our officers at a time when we really don't need it. As part of that, it was something we had talked about for a while, but we've moved it up to the front burner, is to see if we can put some of our forms online. So for example, if someone drives off and they didn't pay for their gas, actually having an officer respond, there's no value to that versus if the attendant at the gas station can go online and fill out all the information. So that way, we're not pulling officers, um, off the street. So we're trying to see if we can fast-track some of those, those forms. There's a lot of agencies that use this, um, so it's, it's not something new. And then also, under police, we do need some face masks. So Holly, if you want to scroll down a little bit. Um, under fire, we have volunteers who are still reporting to calls. Unfortunately, this is, tends to be the busy time of year for firefighters. You have probably noticed a lot of red flag warnings. So we're just really needing our public to be cognizant of that and to be extra careful. The last thing we need is a fire to pull our attention away from the other response activities that we're doing for COVID nineteen. And then fire also needs protective equipment. You have seen some updates from the city clerk and the municipal court. Mostly, the staff is working from home unless there is anything related to municipal court. The judge has, um, been using Zoom to hold court, and they've also been writing several tickets further out, kind of triaging what needs to actually show up and, and limiting who comes into the courtroom to make sure we're meeting all the social distancing requirements. From an IT perspective, staff is mostly working from home. Huge pat on the back for these guys. They went to a lot of work to get two organizations, so City of Alamosa and the City of Montevista mobile, to where the workforce can work from home and do that in efficient and effective manner. So great job to our IT staff. From the city manager's perspective, which is HR, public information and admin, we're mostly working from home. The big thing from an HR perspective is we're making sure we're compliant with all of the federal and state laws that are coming out in regards to how to pay employees and how leave time is treated, and all of those types of things. And then also, I'm just very, very grateful that we have an organization where we are not laying employees off. We're not making them have to worry about burning through their paid leave. Everyone has maintained their job, and they're not having to worry about that in a time where there's a lot of things to worry about. And so, um, I think that's a very, very fortunate thing to have. The attorney's office, um, he, the whole office is mostly working from home. For economic development, the director is mostly working from home. Additionally, we are wanting to start running out efforts for business support. We're calling it the Business Emergency Support Team, ESS. We wanted to get the E in there because who doesn't want to be on the best team? Um, and so we have a lot of our library staff and a few other staff from other areas where the facilities have been closed and maybe the workload's not as heavy right now. We're going to get a speaking script, and we're gonna be making personal phone calls to every business to find out what their immediate needs are and to make sure we're hooking them up with the experts. And so we may have some businesses that are really well versed on what's coming out from the federal level. They have the capacity to go on and fill out the applications and they may not need much help. And so it will be good to know that. But then we may have businesses that just are not aware of where they can go, what's needed, and then we can connect them with the small bit SBDC or Kathy can work with them or people who are more trained in what forms need to be filled out and and who they need to talk to. So we're gonna use some of the generalist. I might even be one of those generalists that are calling the businesses to triage the ones that need more assistance up to those like our Chamber and Kathy and Development Review Group and all them who are experts and and can provide that extra support. So Finance, I save them for last because this is where you're gonna see some of the new information. So mostly staff is working in the office. That is because the software that they need to be able to do is on their computers. It's it's not something you can do from home. But there's only three of them and they are maintaining all appropriate distances and taking all precautions. We have announced to the public that we're not disconnecting during this time and to contact the office for a payment plan if needed. Judy has had a few people contact her and they're working on that. Right now, we're anticipating a 25% reduction in our sales tax for 2020. This is about a $2 million hit to the General Fund and about $360,000 to the Rec Fund, Streets Trust Fund and the Enterprise Debt Fund. So when I talked about the Streets and and First Street and how much we're gonna be able to get done, you can see that it might be a slightly shorter because of the shortfall of about $360,000 and not having a fund balance in that yet. So that that is a significant hit. Thankfully, we've had a very fiscally conservative council and this is when our fund balance is definitely coming in to to benefit us. We are projecting that sales tax will return to 2019 levels. So pre-COVID-19, this the amount of money we were bringing in, we're projecting maybe by 2023. It's not gonna happen on overnight, but we also do feel like people are really focused on the local and buying local and supporting local and and wanting to get the economy back up and earning wants they can. And so we're we're I just want you to understand the assumptions we were making when we were trying to forecast what we needed to do financially. So if we think we're gonna take a 25% hit and we're not gonna return to 2019 levels until 2023, we felt we needed to look at our operations, the capital plan, all of that to see, do we need to cut? What do we need to do to get through this? And so from a general fund, we feel that we can operate as normal. We will be having department heads tighten their belt, but it's not something to where I need to say, cut your budget by 20% or anything like that. So we will be making sure that we take a look and maybe we don't do as much training this year or some different things like that. But we will probably have to reduce going forward the CIP by about 25%. But considering that we've taken almost a $2 million hit to the General Fund, I think Judy and I felt like this is this is a pretty decent outlook compared to what other cities might be facing when they're looking at reducing operations. We feel that at this point, we can evaluate the CIP in July and August. So council will 100% get to weigh in on those priorities and what projects they think still need to be there, what can be moved, all of those types of things. So this isn't something that that we're just gonna do. The Recreation Fund unfortunately had a much lower fund balance to be able to take a 25% hit. So we had to look at of moving the last remaining debt payment, which was for the multi-purpose facility. So all the other debts, so when we talked about golf course, those types of things had already been moved into the General Fund. The last remaining one that was in there was for the multi-purpose facility at 159 per year. We we need to look at moving that over and that would come before council's budget amendment. And if you remember, when we do our budget, we have that line item, that's the transfer in, the transfer out, and that's the cost allocation that the Finance Director uses. So for our Enterprise Fund, they still use finance, they still use IT, they still use legal. So we we put a percentage on that and a value and then that's how much the Enterprise Fund has to reimburse the General Fund for legal and IT and HR and all of those. Well, it's the same for the Recreation Fund as well. So in order for us to feel as if we get their 10-year plan up to the 8% line, which is what the policy and taper requirements are, we would need to reduce that cost allocation by about half, which is about 150,000 if we reduce that. The Enterprise Fund is not dependent on sales tax, so that fund remains stable and does not need to see very many changes. So in regards to the CIP and the 2020 projects that were approved, what we're recommending is we put four on hold for the General Fund. That is the Way Finding Signage, the Loader with Multi-Tool, the PDA Track and an Update the Lights to LED at Street. This puts on hold about 163,000. We couldn't, there wasn't much more to put on hold because our department heads apparently are very, very skilled at once the budget's approved, putting out the competitive bids, getting the stuff ordered. A lot of the stuff has already been ordered or we already have that is in the 2020 CIP. In regards to the Recreation Fund, we are recommending that two CIP projects that were for 2020 be put on hold and that's the Rec Center Upper Track and the Tennis Court Resurfacing, and that's a value of 95,000. And so again, these don't just go away. What we would do is when we talk about the CIP in July or August, is we would have these projects in with all the other projects and and go over what we think we could afford and what the priorities are. So that is the presentation I had for you tonight. I assume you have a lot of questions and I know that there's been some emails coming in in regards to the golf course.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, I'm quite sure there's several of you who would like to make some comments. And I want to make sure that everyone is heard. So what I'm going to do is I'll scroll at the top of the screen here to see if I see any raise their hand and then I will recognize you. Okay, and then Holly will unmute you so that you can speak. I do ask that everyone allow people to just finish their conversation so we can move to the next person. And if we're gonna have a conversation back and forth between council members, just be mindful of how we interrupt someone, okay? All right. So no one's raising their hand, so go David, please.
Mayor, Mayor Charlie has his hand raised.
Okay, we'll go with Counsel Grego first, followed up by Counsel Brawls. Go ahead, Counsel Grego.
Thank you, Mayor, and I did press that star nine twice, so I don't know if you didn't see it or not. But anyway, I have two questions. The first one is on Streets. We we had gotten some grants for the Washington Addition area. Are those gonna be affected in any way? Are we still gonna pursue with the, I believe it's going towards the engineering of Washington Addition Street? That's a question for City Manager.
So yes, Charlie, that is, since it's grant funded and we've already started using the grants and the project, I mean, we've got a contract and it's it's still moving forward. So that is, that remains in the CIP and we didn't touch that.
Yeah, I was I was just worried that if we weren't gonna do anything, we might lose that grant money.
We've been using it.
Okay, good. My second question, and you just talked about the Enterprise Fund. You said that it it wouldn't be affected, but what happens if a a large portion of our community can't pay either water and sewer and all that? What effect does that do to the Enterprise Fund?
Well, so clearly that would have a big impact and we did lower some of the revenue. But the other part is we're hoping that even with pay plans, people might be paying a portion of it. So if someone's bill is $40, but during this time, if they're impacted, they may only be able to pay $5 or one month they can't pay anything and the next month they they can pay $5 dollars or something like that. So there will be some, but we're also hoping that with the federal stimulus funds and unemployment funds and and those types of benefits coming through, that then people will be able to pay the bills that they have.
And I just, I just, City Manager, I just wanted to point that out just in case, you know, because it might be affected, the Enterprise Fund. And like you say, we're hoping that with the with these relief funds that are coming in, people will will use them towards that.
Yes, but and and just to be clear, so while we are not disconnecting during this time and while we are willing to put people on a on a payment plan or and to give people more time, that does not remove the need for them to pay at some point in time. And so that is all gonna be very reasonable. It's not gonna, you know, we're not gonna want to hurt people, but they will have to pay and and so our our assumption is this is not gonna last forever.
Well, I appreciate that very much. And my last comment, Mayor, if I may, we talked about these portable showers. When we have emergencies like this as big as as it is, what role does the county play in in providing big stuff like that? You know, I think that's something that that would come from the county to help the city. When you talk about mobile showers and and mobile water units and stuff like that. I don't know if we've looked into that, but I think that that's the role I I personally believe that the county should be playing because we are still part of the county.
And and Charlie, this doesn't answer your comment 100%, but I do want to make sure because I don't think I made this clear. The hand washing unit was provided to us by Alamosa County Health. And so they actually had a few hand washing units. They offered them to a few other partners. I think La Pointe was not interested in it. I think the Boys and Girls Club is looking at getting one located at their location. And then we had one located at Cole Park. And so the hand washing station very much was provided through Alamosa County Health. They've also worked with us to make sure we know these resources are available. But it as far as sharing in the cost or anything like that for the shower, we never did have that conversation.
And Heather, I I noticed that the cost of one of those things is between 10 to $15,000 and then you add in operating it and having somebody there. You're talking about a lot of money there and that's why I, there's gotta be a way that both city and county, if this is something needed, they should be able to work together and fund this together.
And then I will say too, I've had conversations with Della offline and and she obviously is the director for the health. So she's not a county commissioner or the county administrator, but we've been able to have very good conversations in regards to what what different responses might be needed for the community and if the city and county should be talking about partnerships.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Grego. Next, we have Counsel Brawls.
I want, I'd like to applaud the city for their best program, reaching out to the businesses because you know, our businesses are gonna be highly impacted. I I appreciate that. I appreciate everything the staff's been doing. It looks like the list that Heather gave us looks like the appropriate actions and I appreciate that. You know, and I and I I think as a council, we want to try to keep as many businesses as we can open if we can. And that's kind of where I get to the golf course. We want to discuss the golf course now.
Okay, unless any other, anyone has any objections, we can go ahead and dive into it now if you want.
Hold on real quick. I just wanted to say that with that screen shared like that with the agenda being the primary focus, you lose the ability to raise your hand. Just putting that, I just wanted to make that note since earlier. I don't know if everybody's screen is like that, but when you have it shared, the little hand raising guy goes away, so you can show me how to fix that, I'd appreciate it.
You have to click on attendees or participants in the bottom left and then you can raise your hand. My little hand is raised.
I was just.
Okay, I see it, it popped up. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so for the order of the meeting, next, after Counsel Brawls has his discussion about the golf course, then we'll have Counsel Daniel and then Counsel Carson, okay?
And Mayor, I believe Counselor V. Hillary's hand as well.
Okay, so, all right, we'll 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 go ahead in the order that we're we just mentioned and then Counsel Le Hill will follow in after that, okay? But let's go ahead and have this golf course discussion and then we'll we'll work through this so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak, okay?
And Mayor, can I just, can I offer a little bit of background for the public? I know Council may be aware of some of this, but from for the public who are watching this. So the, I did last week when the governor's orders for the stay at home and and the more restrictive of what was essential businesses and those things, when that order came out, city staff had a really good discussion on what does that mean? And golf course was one that we really, really did struggle with. It's it's doesn't fit into any really one category. It is recreation. It falls in line with, we need people to be able to get out to to do something from a mental health and and physical health and 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 those types of things. It's a community asset that that people like to utilize. And and so from that perspective, you know, we we didn't necessarily want to close it. But then we were also looking at the language where we needed to close playgrounds and shelters and the purpose of that is because they sometimes give the impression to congregate in those areas. And when you're playing golf, sometimes people will go out on their own and maybe they would go out with just whoever they're sheltering in place with. But they also tend to do it in groups of four or to get a group. And even if they're in different carts or they're walking and they're doing their best to do the social distancing, it does present a little bit of risk. Now, make sure we're transparent that John and Andy, if you would have asked them, their vote was to keep it open. John worked really, really hard to put in a lot of procedures that would reduce the risk very, very, very low. So the pro shop would be closed, you would only be doing things online. We're not renting out the the carts, all of those types of things. So as much as any control we could have, it was going to be reduced. My concern was just the potential mixed messaging that we're sending in that it's, this isn't just about social distancing and that's what I'm worried that our community is getting confused about. You know, you shouldn't be bringing your whole family to the grocery store. You should have one person who's going and getting what's needed and then leaving. So we're not putting the grocery store workers at risk. When the kids are supposed to be staying home from school, they shouldn't be going to their friend's house, those types of things. So even if people are practicing the social distancing, it's more about staying home as well. And and so when you use a golf course, it's a little different than when you go out on a trail or what, when you might be going to a park. So I did take a more extreme view from a caution perspective of that. But I want to make sure that we are 100% transparent because we've also been getting emails from members of the public requesting that we open the golf course. And they make all the same great points that Andy and John made on being able to have something for people to get out and do and and those types of things. Lastly, my only consideration was we were at a point that we needed to decide if we were gonna onboard some new employees because there is a difference in the crew, the number that we need to have on our crew if the if the course is being played on versus if it's not being played on. And again, we can minimize, you know, maybe each employee's assigned their own mower and they're not sharing it and we minimize the training and, you know, and all of those types of things. But if there's still a a degree of risk that wouldn't be there otherwise. Now, I am not arguing or trying to say that if we open the golf course, we're gonna have this mass eruption of cases or spreading it. So I'm not, there's, I don't think anything like that. And I honestly don't think it's the end of the world and council decides to open it. So we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of the thought process that So we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of the thought process that we went through, that even on staff, we had differences of opinion. And make sure that, you know, there is, there is no negative to either side of it, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Heather and Mayor, just wanted to let you know that John is on the call if you had questions for him, if you wanted.
John is on the call right now?
Yes. He is on, and I could unmute him if you guys have questions for him.
John.
As well.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Heather?
Well, do I have, do I have the phone or?
Hold on one second, David. So John is on the call right now, and he'll be unmuted, right?
If you want him unmuted.
Okay.
To handle how we normally handle staff questions. So you guys can talk, but then if there's staff questions, you guys can ask.
Okay, good. Okay, Council Brawls.
I was going to point out that my my research, basically, Colorado Golf Association, they indicated that Governor Polis would not make a decision one way or the other on golf courses, that they're going to leave it to the local authority. And that, you know, and so I say it's left to our local authority. And you know, my attitude is whatever we can keep open, we ought to keep open, because there's just not that much to do in Alamosa. The other thing is, I did call golf courses around here, and as of Monday, Salida, Walsenburg, Trinidad, Red Hawk in Pueblo, Holly Dot, their courses are open. And those are those are remote golf courses. It's true that the city courses in Denver have closed. But I think that we're remote enough, and I think that we can have appropriate precautions that you know, that will prevent any spread of the of the virus. And as Heather was saying, I, you know, I I support having the course open with the precaution that people can register online and pay fees online. One golf course I like said they have a one person per cart rule. And, you know, people like to get out there and walk and play golf, and I I think the risk is minimal that people are going to catch the virus by playing golf. So, you know, it's my vote that we keep the golf course open. And if, you know, if we were after a discussion, if we want to make a motion, I'll make a motion. So that's kind of what I wanted to say.
Okay, so so what we're going to do, we're not going to accept a motion or anything at this moment. I'm going to allow everyone to speak. And then after everyone has had an opportunity to talk, then we'll follow up if anyone wants to make a motion, and we'll follow through with the rest of the procedures. Is that okay with everyone? All right. So we're going to go down the list here. So I I believe I have next, Councilor Daniel. So Councilor Daniel, I know you may have a comment as well that you want to make in addition to this part, but if we could just focus on the golf course issue right now, and then I'll keep this same order as we rotate, and I assure you, everyone will get an opportunity to bring up any concerns you have, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the clarification. I really appreciate the type of conversation that people had regarding the staff. And I recognize that this is our opportunity, and we have a local, this is local control, and I'm all for that. I don't know that we know everything about how this virus spreads, and I'm just going to be real about that. And I think creating this space and the, and like, putting the our community members first by saying, no, we're not going to have golf, because it does encourage people to congregate. And I know that we have very, very smart people, and we have people who will take the right precautions. I also know we have people who don't. I've spoken to people who didn't have a COVID plan in their places of work and don't quite understand everything and don't know why they can't take their kids to other places or why churches are closed down. Like, they're struggling with some of that. And so I think we will have people who don't follow the rules that we're asking them to follow. I would be really hesitant to want to put our staff in that position, so all of the online stuff would make a lot of sense to me. But I I support the decision that the team made, especially knowing that it was a really hard decision. And so I would support keeping the golf course closed at this point. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Daniel. Next, we have Councilor Carson, followed by Councilor V. Hill.
I I agree with everything Councilor Daniel said. We do not know how this virus travels. But I have the the opposite opinion. I think that with that being said, we have taken really good precautions as a city. I don't necessarily agree that the golf course should be closed. I think we should put some different controls in place, limiting golfing numbers, golfers, maybe to two, one is is a good idea as well. But I think in in the state that we are and and with the amount of the amount of precautions we have in place already, I think to maintain a sense of normalcy is a good idea. I know that it is difficult to try to balance that. But if we are trying to reach a balance, you know, we we can go a step further, and I know nobody's going to like this opinion, but we can go a step further and look at what our stores are doing. I mean, you can, one of the biggest places for people in this community is Walmart, and it's rampant. It's there's tons of people there. And I'm not saying that's right. It isn't. It isn't right. We should be limiting who's going out and staying home. But being able to walk the course alone is no different than walking a trail. You have the same, actually today, in the way people are are using the trails, you probably have much more contact on a trail than you do on the golf course. So I don't necessarily agree that that is one thing we should have taken. If if we're registering online, we're limiting the number of golfers, and there is a minimal interaction with staff, and, you know, I think we should open it. They're going to have to maintain the grass anyway, because the thing is, whether somebody's walking on it or not, that grass is going to continue to grow. So I I think that's one of those things that we should probably consider, just keeping open in a limited fashion. And again, doing the right things, taking precautions, but those those employees are going to be working anyway in in some capacity or another. So I think we can adjust some of that and take the right precautions, because we are going to take a hit. Keep in mind, financially, we did just bail the golf course out. So just saying that we want to completely tank that right now is that source of income isn't really that smart either. I think we need to try to to patch some of those holes where we can. So my opinion is I think we should reopen it, you know, and with some controls in place. I don't think that we should have more than one or two golfers. I mean, I like the one person golfing, but you know, again, and and if you are golfing and you're really using it to maintain your sanity and to to help the cabin fever, then going out by yourself shouldn't be an issue. I mean, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. But next, we have Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. So I too have received a lot of phone calls over the last couple of days. I'm like all you have as well, and some emails. I think the golf course should be open. I think it it deals a lot with the mental health of people. They would love to go out and do that. Keep some sane, keep some exercising a little bit in that. Ever since the the shelter in place order was issued by Polis, and even before that, once our leaders in government were saying we should be at home and not around crowds, you wouldn't believe how many people are on our levy system walking the trails. I go, I've been out there every day for the last three weeks. It's unreal. It's cool. People are exercising and doing their thing, and people are maintaining that six feet. But there are, I I agree with Mr. Carson. There's more people on our trails than there are on the golf course. I also understand the preventative measures John and his staff have done at the golf course prior to the shutdown. So I think if we keep those in place, as well as I thought of some ideas and with some with some of these phone calls over the last couple of days, someone told me that you can, you can hit your ball to the cup, and there's a some sort of device that doesn't allow the ball to go in the hole, and you know it, but you know it went, it would it would have went in. So there's less contact when you go get your ball from the cup. Also, I thought about this, and this might be a little extreme, but we're in an unprecedented era is to to keep the safety of our workers, don't let, just for the time being, don't let people use our carts. And you can maybe bring your own cart from your house, and you can go on the golf course, or you walk the course. I like the idea of one, if if, you know, and wherever we land, one person per cart. We have also some things I've thought about is this, like, if if a group, and then and then another thing is this is, I don't know if I if I like four people playing golf together at the same time, maybe one or two or three, but golf, golf in and of itself is a social distance sport. But whatever we can do to keep that that social distance there also would be this is like if if whoever is starting on hole one, the next group can't get on the course until they're like at hole three or whatever. I don't know. Just different things that we can think about. Thank you.
Mayor, can I jump in real fast?
Yes.
So we had already made it to where we weren't using our carts. So people either needed to walk or they needed to have their own carts. So to save council some time, I I don't want to go over all the weeds of what John's come up with, but there is tons of details. I think the better discussion is if you want to open, would it be open or not for your guys' discussion?
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, next, I have Councilor Hensley, then Councilor Grego.
I'm muted.
Are you ready for me?
Yeah, Councilor Hensley, and then Councilor Grego. Did someone say, and me? Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
So I did some research as well, so I'm not going to necessarily repeat everything. I did look up also. There's quite a few golf courses open. There are some that are closed, some that did close in the last week. But we do have quite a few in Colorado that are open. And Ohio right now, they actually, from the health department for the state, have said, has actually said that golf courses can stay open in the state of Ohio. And so I, obviously, we're not Ohio, but I just thought that does show a precedent of another state who's actually put it in their framework, saying that the golf courses can stay open. I think with the precautions, you know, I'm a little nervous, but I do think with the precautions, one of the things I might add is even if they have their own carts, if they're not, if it's not like two people who actually live together, that two friends maybe shouldn't be in the cart together if they're not normally together. And so it does mean more, maybe one person has to walk or whatever, but that idea there of really trying to keep that distance. So that would be the only thing I would add, and that may have already been, as Heather said, one of the precautions that's added. But I do know in talking to John and Eddie, and also other people that have called me, is that it does sound like a lot of precautions are in place, and if we just keep those, I think it's worth having that. There is a lot of people out on the trails, and so I kind of support that as well, as I don't think there'd be any more on the golf course than there are on the trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Grego.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
At six o'clock, I was watching Channel Seven News before this meeting. And the governor himself has had a tough time making the decision as well as as other communities as whether to close or open golf courses, and seventy-five percent of them are open. I appreciate the city manager's concern for the well-being of our community. You know, this isn't at the time, as she explains, for us to go and and get groups and party in somebody's house or or go and visit other people. This is a time to stay home. Stay home and and try to stop this virus from spreading. You know, I agree that the golf course should be an area where you can walk, just like trails and so forth. And I I don't have a problem with keeping it open. What I'd like to see is, and I I don't know if if the governor was going to look at 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 this home, staying home now, April the eleventh or so. And I I would think if the weather is bad out there now, if we we could lobby just for another eight to ten days, maybe April the the twelfth, open that golf course. That would still give us an opportunity for this virus to move on, you know, and 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 keep it closed till then. But I I'm in favor of opening the golf course. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, so before I wrap it up and and make my comments, does anyone else have any other comments that need to be made? Because after I make my comments, then I'll open it up for a vote, okay? So does any, go ahead.
To answer Charlie's question, we had a state update call today coordinated by the governor's office for municipalities. The question was raised to his staff on if the governor is thinking about extending the stay at home. And what they've answered is that he's definitely looking at it. He's looking at what other states have done. Now, some have gone, I think, all the way until June. I'm not sure if that's a thing he's leaning towards, but how they answered is he's looking at the data to to see what kind of decision we need to make for right now. I think a lot of people are assuming that it probably will be extended, but maybe not as extreme as some of the other states is how I would interpret that.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. For me, Heather, and council and staff, I'm really concerned with the health and safety of our staff members, our community members. And I'm really concerned with the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. Heather, I have a question for you. If we were to open the golf course, how many staff members could potentially be exposed to the virus? Okay, Heather, hold on.
Your mic's off.
Okay, your 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 mic is unmuted, please.
Oh, I got it. I got it. Sorry. I'm going to have Andy answer this question. We've got two different groups of employees. The pro shop is not impacted whether we're open or not. So the way John has it set up, they're not impacted, and they're not going to be there to monitor it. So it's going to be an honor system when people are out there in what size groups and and those types of things. The staff that is impacted is the number of employees we have to bring on for maintenance. So yes, it has to get mowed, but the type of mowing and the how often it has to get mowed determines how many staff. So Andy, if you want to get on. And then I know John is here. I didn't want to take us down the rabbit hole of all the things he's thought through, because I mean, he could probably spend ten minutes talking about all the precautions we've got in there. But let me have Andy answer your immediate question on the number of staff for maintenance.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So at full staff, the maintenance crew is about six seasonals and two full-time. In this interim period of uncertainty, we only brought two seasonals on, and we have the two full-timers. So that's four. So you're looking at about fifty percent. But I might, you know, the course, whether it's being played or not, does require a lot of maintenance. So just not having players there. With the skeleton crew of four, I just, I would like to say that it's not going to be maintained as it should. You know, we were just, we're watching everything from revenue to safety. So that was, you know, part of the reason of those decisions.
And I know for me, I I I heard the issue about revenue and the potential loss of revenue and all of that. But to me, the revenue is not a concern right now. The concern is the safety of our citizens, the safety of our staff, exposing additional people to the COVID virus. And that's my my hesitance of saying that we should reopen the golf course, because if one person, just one person gets infected because of the action that we take, that's one person too many for me. So I will not vote in favor for it at this time, but I would like to thank the phone, the people who made the phone calls to me today. I'd like to thank all the people who wrote the emails. I I I really feel that being outside is healthy, but I I really hope that we just think about if we can wait two weeks till this passes, so we can have a better understanding of how it's really going to impact our community. I don't think that's a long time to wait for us to think about the health and safety of our staff and our community members. So with that being said, open up the floor. Someone to make a motion. Who would like to to vote?
Fight, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor.
So what we're gonna do, Council Grego, um, if you'd like, if you want to make a comment right now, you can. But after Council of Rawls make that motion, I was going to, uh, allow us to have further discussion, uh, if anyone had any comments.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment before he makes his motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and I, I might not have, uh, had clearly stated, uh, what I was saying here earlier, but. If we could, you know, the weather right now is bad and I, I don't know if golfers, they go out there and play golf, whether bad or good, whatever. But to give. An opportunity for maybe this virus to move forward, is there a problem, uh, with the golfer maybe staying? Uh, keeping this course closed till, till the, the 12th of April? That's just 12 days. You know, the more you give this, this, uh, uh, this virus a chance to move on, the better. Uh, I don't know if there would be a problem with something like that. I would rather feel comfortable, and, and I'm going back to, and I'm, I'm. I'm glad the clarification, uh, the city manager gave on how the governor stands, but, uh. In the beginning, he was thinking of maybe lifting some of this stuff on April the 11th, but, uh, things have gotten different. So I would, i- if, if there would be a problem, there wouldn't be a problem, April the 12th even for Easter. Open that golf course up. You know, but I'm in favor of opening that, not keeping it closed, but let's give this, uh, virus a chance to move on and. The more time you give it, the better, I think. So if, if, uh, before David makes his motion, I would. Hope he would take that into consideration and, and, uh, I'm like you, Mayor, I, I, one life that gets affected is too much. So, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Council Grego. Okay, Council of Rawls.
Well, no, I, I'm concerned about the safety too, but. Uh, I, I play a lot of golf and I go to, and I go to Walmart. And I was at Walmart today and there's a lot more people at Walmart, uh, past the virus than there is on the golf course. On the golf course, you have a, a maximum of, of a foursome, and half of them are walking most of the time. But, uh, as far as the weather, the weather's perfect. I would have played golf today and I would have played it Monday, and I would have played it Tuesday. Uh, if, if the, if the temperature's above 50 degrees, you play golf. And we have 300 members and a lot of them have paid their membership dues, like myself. And I don't want to wait 12 or 18 days, uh, if we have the appropriate precautions. I, I think that, uh, we need to, we need, uh, uh, keep open and, and allow physical activity where we, where we can. We can't go to the rec center, we can't swim. Uh, so, you know, I think golf, uh, being that we, it's discretionary that we should, that we should open the course. So I make the motion that we open the golf course with the appropriate precautions.
I'll second it.
I think it's good getting fired.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, um, if we have no further discussion, I just have one comment. I just want to make, uh, Mr. Rawls comment, uh, Councilor.
Mayor, it, it seems that.
There is further discussion. People are making their head.
Go ahead, Council Carson.
Council Vial wanted to speak and so did Council Daniel since about five minutes ago.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, because what's happening is, is your lights are not staying on. They're blinking only when you move, so I can't really see you and I have to scroll to see everyone. So who is first and we'll go in that order, okay?
Daniel.
Okay, Council Daniel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Mayor, if you change your view to, um, gallery view, you'll see all of us and you can see us waving. Um, in the upper right-hand side. Um, so I appreciate, I always want to say, I appreciate what everyone has said and, um. I am, so I'm feeling more comfortable hearing about all the precautions and I knew that there were things and, and, and. So I appreciate that. So I do feel more comfortable with this. I think physical activity is very important. The concern I have is that, again, we have people who, who even if we ask them to do it on their honor. Sometimes people don't, and so I just, I just want to be real about their, it's a risk. Um, and so I support the ongoing, um. Ability to have physical activity and things like that, and so I appreciate what everyone said and I can support this more if we feel like we can manage it. Um, and so it sounds like the staff, based on what Andy said, we've made good plans. And so I can appreciate that and that we would have had to do some things anyway. Um, so I really want to say I appreciate council and the people that have shared information. If we can do it as safe as we can do it, I just want to trust our public partners in this and our community members. And if we go out and we see that they're not following the rules that we've put into place, I think it has to come back to us, council. Um, that would be the, the end part of my discussion is that if it doesn't look like people are doing what they need to do and we have to step up our game. Then I would, I would change my mind on this, which I, you know, obviously just changed it tonight, but I would go back to the way I was thinking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, was it Council Vial next?
Yes, sir. I have a, I have a question for Mr. Broyles is, um, in your motion, do you want the golf course open immediately? Or is there a little timeframe in that or what, what are you thinking?
Well, no, I like how it opened immediately. Uh, the golf, the, uh, yeah, immediately. I mean, that's, no, there's no other. Uh, because the weather, the weather's good and, you know, the, the golfers want to get out and play. And we have 300 members at my last count, so, you know, there's, there's people who want to play.
Okay, and I do, I do appreciate what Ms. Daniel said about if there's abuse and if we get more than. If we get groups a lot bigger than four, five, six, I mean, the max is 10. I, I really hope people are, are going to be smart about this, but I agree that if it gets out of hand, we need to shut it back down.
I agree.
Hey, um, Council Carson?
I, I would make one request of Council Broyles, uh, that you modify your motion. Or drop the motion and create another motion stating that you, that we would like the golf course opened under tight restrictions. Uh, one being no more than, I mean, I, I'm, I'm really thinking that we shouldn't have more than one person. Golfing or two people to abide by that liability. I mean. You know, groups are, are a huge no-no at all. I mean, not even two people. So we should, we should, if we are going to. I think your motion should be modified to, to state that we want, you know, some sort of strict number, either two or one golfers max. And they have to be cohabitants.
Well, in all due respect, let's, let's let the golf professional and our, uh, superintendent in our golf board. You know, set the, set the appropriate precautions. Cause you know, they, they play all the time and you don't think that's appropriate?
No, I don't, I don't agree because I do agree there is a liability or at least, you know, a moral liability. And I do think we need to, I mean, golfing in a group right now is not an option at all. I don't think it is. I think. For if you're walking with your partner or you're golfing with that partner, I would agree to that. I don't think golf groups are, are even on the table.
Do you think a foursome is, you think a foursome is appropriate or?
Uh, yeah, I think if, if people are breaking it, I think we should immediately close it, just like they said. I mean, if people can't adhere to that. If we're gonna go and take the step to open the golf course, then they should strictly adhere to that. If not, we close it and leave it closed.
Yeah, I mean, let's just stick it to a foursome. They have to be a foursome no more.
I agree. Call the roll.
Okay, so, um, do we have anyone else who would like to make any comments at all before we call this to a vote? Because we have a motion and a second and we just finished discussion. Okay, Ms., Ms. Holland?
Uh, Council Vial?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Council Broyles?
Yes.
Council Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
No.
The motion carried six to one with Mayor Coleman casting the no vote.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. I mean, I think that's gonna be appreciated. Like I said, if there's a problem, we'll bring it back to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, do we have any other discussion items we need to talk about before we move to, uh, committee reports?
So I just, Mayor, I was just gonna ask if there was any questions on the, the financial assumptions. We were making or anything like that on the, the other stuff.
Any comments, anyone?
Well, I, I think, I think the financial assumptions are pretty. Pretty, I guess, okay. The, the problem is you just don't know. You know, thinking about our, our sales tax going down 25% makes me gulp, but that could be a reality. We, because, uh, I know with the businesses shut down, there, there are businesses struggling, so. Um, I think those, I think, uh, it's almost like. Using the swag method, you just have to use a scientific guess and go from there. And if things get worse, we, we change the assumption. But I, I like what Heather's done with the 25%. Um, decline to see what happens. I'd like to see what the city budget looks like with a 25% decline in sales tax.
I believe Mike, Michael Carson had his hand raised and then Counselor Yon Vial as well.
Okay, let's go Council Carson and Council Vial.
If, if you can answer this quick, Heather, if not, if I can save the question for later, I just wanted to know, um.
That's good.
If, if we had to, if we decided to rent the shower again, because that's a huge cost. Uh, where would that money come from? Is there, I mean, does that come from the general fund or in the future? Are we gonna create a fund for that kind of stuff? Um, cause that's a big cost. I, I'm not, I don't, and if it's not a quick question, you can email me and we can. Talk about it later. I just wanted to know where that would come from.
It's probably informative for me to answer it right now. So when you get into time of emergencies, um. Rarely are you gonna have line items that are gonna match up 100%. So protective equipment that might line up in our, um, supply line item. But something like this, um, as well as maybe a few other purchases, they're just, they, they don't have a budget. It's gonna be unbudgeted. Um, but what we would look at is with the federal stimulus, it might qualify to be reimbursed by, for 100%. Or if that's not it, we would want to make sure we track it for FEMA reimbursement. I don't think FEMA has 100% reimbursement. I think it's a 25, 75 or something. Um, but we would look to try to get, um, reimbursed by FEMA for any purchases we make like this. Um, for the response. So for us, in, in all honesty, the bigger part to me is the complexity of maintaining it. So given that, um, there might be a solution to this. Um, and we wouldn't have to worry about the staffing and the protective gear for who's having to do that. I would lean to putting it on the back burner, not because of cost.
Thank you. Okay, Council Grego.
Yes, I, I do want to get it in front of, uh, Vial, but, uh, uh, I just wanted. Once again, express the fact that if we choose to go for these showers, that this be a joint city and county effort. And that we work together and make it possible. It shouldn't just be a city, you know, a city project. It should be a joint deal and I know Heather pointed out that they are working with us, but that's something that, uh, that we should have a conversation with them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vial.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot to say at the end of the meeting for council comment, a lot to do with this COVID nineteen, but just one thing, two things. Uh, uh, appreciation for Heather and Judy for working with people who can't afford to pay their bills right now. But we'll work with them over the future and I really appreciate that. And then the second thing is, um, can you talk a little bit about? This hand washing station and could, is it, do we have it? And then is, is La Puente wanting one or did they not want one, something like that?
So, um, the hand washing station is, it's not our property. And we needed to put it at a location that we felt it would be secure and that we could also bring it in overnight. So the water doesn't freeze in it and it can't be stolen or, or anything like that. So since our bathrooms out at Cole Park were under construction. Um, and the other bathrooms are all closed, all we had were porta, porta potties. And so we did take the Alamosa County Health up on their offer to have that station. And so, um, it was available during certain times and we would put soap in it. We weren't even going to attempt to put paper towels. Um, in this situation, it, it wouldn't have lasted. Um, and then staff puts it out in the morning and puts it back in. Um, but if the bathrooms aren't open now, they will be very, very soon. Um, and once that happens, we won't need the hand washing station because the bathrooms will be open. So we'll return that to. Um, to the, the county health. It, it was interesting in our, our conversations, I think. Um, it's an evolving thing as people talk about what their needs are and what they aren't. And, and so as I reflect on my discussions with La Puente. Um, just be aware that they may have had discussions behind the scenes that then caused them to change their mind or some different things like that. But, um, on some of the conversations we would have, um, we made it very clear that if they needed porta potties, that the city would pay for it. Um, but they were not interested in that. Um, and then county health made it very clear that if they wanted a hand washing station. Um, one of the employees mentioned, you know, having that on the front porch of out by the shelter. But I guess upon further discussions, they decided they didn't want that. I think some of the confusion maybe came when there's social media posts or other types of things put out there requesting help from the community. For porta potties and hand washing statements. Um, I'm not sure if maybe those posts came out before other conversations. I don't know the timing of all of those, of what came first. Um, but all I can tell you is, um, the, those are all offered. And, um, they, they did not want them.
So, and that's, and that's kind of the point I wanted to make is that the city and the county and other partners have been in contact with each other. To do, to see what we can do for the homeless folks who go to La Puente and that. So we have been doing our job trying to get this done. This is an unprecedented time and we're trying to, to help. And we've offered numerous times to help the folks at La Puente. I just want that to be on the record.
And I do want to share, Counselor Vial, um, and I, and I hope I'm respecting, um, Della's. Um, privacy as well, sharing this, but I did share with Della that as a community, if the city and county needed to come together. And, and look at something like a hotel or to look at something that big, um, from a sheltering perspective. I don't know the ins and outs of what the health is going to allow because that's where the restrictions usually are. Um, on what can be done and not done and what the recommendations are, all coming from the state health department. And so my comment to Della only was, um, and Dawn Chapman as our emergency manager was that if. If we need to have these discussions seriously, um, then let's have them and let's make sure we do it correctly so we can get FEMA reimbursement. Um, but that we need to do right by our citizens and she was passing that information along up. Um, people in the chain for the emergency response consideration. Um, but it's, it's, it's a tough thing to tackle and part of what my concern is, is, you know, you, you. It's like we're trying to create a second shelter, which logically seems like it would have all the same issues that prompted La Puente to shut their shelter. So, um, there's just issues, but I just wanted to make it clear that we have been having these discussions.
Okay, Christina, thank you, uh, Heather. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate, um, the conversation. I have some. They're probably kind of minute issues compared to what we've just been talking about. But when we talked about reducing the cost allocation for the multipurpose facility and, um, that fund. How long were we planning to reduce that, knowing that we're not going to be back in full swing for a couple of years? Was it just a one-year reduction or is it an ongoing reduction plan?
So the, the impact to the rec fund is, um, for 2020, $360,000. And they did not have the fund balance like the general fund. So then for 2021. We were thinking maybe if we can get 10% of that 25% back, so we're still not at 2019 levels. And then we thought for 2022, we can get another 10% back, still not at 2019. So 2023 is when we were thinking, so the overall impact is more than just the 360,000. Um, so no, we moved the remaining payments, all remaining payments for the multipurpose over to the general fund. Um, and we reduced by half the cost allocation. Now, what we'll do is we'll watch that closely, but we will need council direction because we can shift more of that back into Parks and Rec. But what it's doing is preventing any capital projects and I don't think our rec board or our citizens are gonna be happy with that for 10 years. And so, um, we. we just, we need to have a conversation. But obviously, I think the intent of the sales tax for REC was to be as self-sufficient as possible. Um, but I also think through the surveys and the outreach that we've done, the river recreation and, and trails and, and those types of things have been big priorities for the community too. So we'll need to have those discussions.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I had two other pieces, just really quickly. Um, I like the online forms. Um, I do think that might take some people getting used to it, but I really like the idea of people being able to report um, and not needing to have, um, on the boots, um, ground conversations. So thank you. Um, and then without the PPE, so the personal protective equipment, and I know, I appreciated kind of saying, you know, we're not in the same realm as healthcare. But do our staff feel safe? Um, and do they feel supported to do their job? Because that's a, that's a big deal too. Like sometimes it's just scary because we don't feel safe. And so I'm just wondering how they're managing that and how you're managing that.
It's hard. Um, Kenny's having, Chief Anderson's having to have a lot of conversations. Um, like any organization, we've got the full spectrum of employees. We have some employees who are like, I rode in the back of the truck and I drank from the water faucet and I'm, you know, nothing's going to get me type of attitude. And we've got other employees who, um, are worried. And, and so, um, I, it is hard. I think Chief Anderson's having to have conversations as are Andy and Harry for, for some of them. There's, we're good on gloves and, and those types of things. But I think, as you know, Christina, you can't just wear one set of gloves the whole day. Um, because then you're, you're, you're contaminating just as much if you weren't wearing type of thing. Um, I think the masks, what Chief Anderson's been trying to weigh is, you know, we have enough right now. We've got not enough. We've got sixty. Um, so that's not enough. But every officer could be wearing one right now, but he's also trying to save some of it for when it gets worse. And if people start seeing officers with masks on, um, the, the public fear that that can create. So we're trying to, to weigh that. Um, Chief Chapman has, was very proactive and, and I think he has some equipment for when it does get more serious, but not, not what he needs type of situation. So it's something where it has been hard. Um, it's been hard to think. I think sometimes the employees who are worried isn't always necessarily worried about themselves. It's worried on what they might bring back to their families. And so outside of the, the protective equipment, we talk about, you know, what other measures can we do? So there was a training video that was put out, I forget who, but as a public agency on things officers can do to reduce it. Um, I know that the state patrol, they're not taking people's driver's license. They're just taking a picture. So they're not exchanging things back and forth and they're not doing, they're using disposable pins. So we've been looking at all that and, and Chief Anderson's also been talking about who you stop and what that inter- interaction looks like to try to minimize. But no, no, none of us are comfortable having our employees out there without all the equipment that they need. And, and they're not comfortable either.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Counselor Daniels, did you ask all your questions before I move over to Counselor Hensley and then Counselor Grego?
She's doing a thumbs up sign.
I'm good. Mine is going to be really quick. So I'm good. Okay. So mine's really quick. First of all, I just want to say kudos to Heather, staff, everybody. Everything you're doing, obviously there's things that you share with us and you keep us really in the loop, but there's tons of stuff that lead up to what you share with us. So I just want to thank you all. I think, um, again, another proud moment, obviously in very devastating times, but a proud moment to be part of Alamosa and what we do. Um, quick question. I've had a couple people, citizens, reach out to me. If they feel that there's gatherings of more than ten or situations, they've asked me, who do they call or what, what's the steps they take? Do we have an answer for that?
Um, so they can call us and, and we can look into it. We're also working extremely closely with, with county health. Um, so they can also call county health as well. So, um, if they want to, if they want to, um, what I can do Liz is let me get you a number, a specific number. I'll check with Kelly on what that might be.
Thank you so much.
And then just so counsel understands and, and our community, you know, there, we did get a few people calling in and, you know, the one we got a call in on a business that maybe they weren't having the right things in place. Chief Anderson just went out there, had a conversation with them and it was fixed. So I, I don't want people thinking we're out there ticketing or doing things like that. A lot of times thankfully for our community, since we are small, it's a simple conversation. I think most people want to comply. Um, I, I am hearing though, in some other communities, and, and I hope it's not happening here, um, where some churches here in the valley, um, might still be having some of their services or, um, a large wedding or a funeral or things like that. And it's hard. It's so hard because these are emotional times and things that are very personal to people. And I'm not sure what those local communities are doing with those discussions, but we're, we're working closely with Della with public health.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Grego.
Yes, uh, one comment, one question. Uh, I want to echo, uh, Counselor Broyles' comments where I thank you Heather and Kathy for reaching out to our business community. It's so important to get those people back and going. And just by making those phone calls and, and making them feel that there's somebody there, even if you, sometimes you might, uh, somebody else might be talking about the same thing. It's so important. And at a time like this, I, you, people need some kind of direction, somebody just to even visit with and, and feel somewhat, somebody's listening out there. You know, so I really thank, uh, Kathy, you know, you, you got away talking to people. You make people feel, uh, uh, feel safe out there. And, and Heather, for you to join in there and your staff is so important. Uh, question is, uh, you sent an email about XL, uh, the plant outage at the golf course. Is that, was that just a one-day deal Heather? Or is that something that's going to affect now that we're going to open the up, the golf course back up?
No, I think it was just a short duration of time and they just wanted to make sure everybody was notified because right now we don't need the, uh, you know, a lot of people calling into nine-one-one saying that there's outages. And so, um, it was, it was regular work. It wasn't an extensive time, um, that it was closed. In fact, I bet it's back on already.
Mayor, uh, if we all work together and we stay together, the team, I think we'll, we'll beat this. And I, I think that, uh, it's going to take some patience and stay home. Everybody needs to stay home. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. All right. We'll stick to the agenda here of any committee reports and then we're going to go to staff announcements and then we'll have council comment. Any committee reports? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay, staff announcements. Oh, Counselor V Hill, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor V Hill.
My phone's off. I jumped, I jumped the gun. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Staff announcements.
To my knowledge, I don't think we have any, um, any department head have an update beyond what we've discussed.
I, I don't have an update. I just wanted to remind you guys that the board dinner did get canceled for the thirteenth and we moved it to June fifteenth.
Okay. No staff announcement. All right. So we're going to wrap this up here in a few minutes when it comes to the council comment so that we could, I can make sure that, uh, we have an order. Um, we'll start off with Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Grego, then followed by Counselor Hensley, and then I'll wrap it up at the end. Is that okay with everybody? All right. We'll start off with Counselor Brawls.
I want to thank everybody. I think, uh, has been echoed, everybody working together is going to make this thing, uh, tolerable and we're going to work through it. And I appreciate the city council and the unity we have. And I appreciate the staff that we have at city council. I think, I think everybody's doing outstanding job. And I, I commend everybody. So that's all I had to say. And, and thanks. And we'll have a great month.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I also agree. The staff is doing a great job and we're in a hard time. Um, it's been mentioned many times and I think everyone knows like our, all of our passion for behavioral health and mental health. But this is a time when we really need to reach out to people who may, um, be lonely. We need to reach out to people who maybe look like they're strong. Um, we've been doing this now for a couple of weeks and it feels like a new normal. I don't want people to get too excited about that because we are not at baseline. We are not functioning at a hundred percent. We are emotional and stressed and, and we need to have patience with ourselves and grace and patience with each other um, and our community members as we go through this together, um, because this is a challenging time and it's, it's going to get harder. Um, people are still going to have, um, challenges and we're still going to have more people get sick. And I think we need to be in it together, but also really, really patient, um, with each other, um, but patient with ourselves. Sometimes we're our hardest critics. And so I just want to encourage anybody who feels lonely or stressed to reach out to someone to talk to them. There are lots of, the crisis line at the state is still open, lots of places, um, Behavioral Health Center, Valleywide, SLB Health. Everybody has, uh, people you can talk to or you can just call a friend. Um, so just want to encourage people to take care of themselves while we're doing this because, you know, we have to wear our, our oxygen masks first before we can help others put theirs on. So just take care of yourselves and good luck with everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson.
Um, I just wanted to tell everybody, uh, hang in there, um, this will pass. And, uh, take care of each other, you know, as best you can from a distance. You know, uh, I, uh, again, I want to commend, uh, IT and staff. Um, from an IT standpoint, it is a butt kicker, I will tell you, to get everybody up and to have everybody working. So yeah, we are blessed as a city to have a good staff and, and we are, we're very blessed to live where we are. Uh, I think we're at a little bit of an advantage. We're a little more geographically separated than some of these bigger metro areas that are struggling. And, uh, you know, I was, I, I heard a comment today because I, I feel really comfortable in, uh, in, in the fact that we're, you know, we're doing what we have to and, and, and as a community and as an individual and, you know, and everybody around me. But I also have that underlying fear that I, I don't know anybody that's been sick personally. And it is very scary when you're looking at it. So, uh, do your best, do your best. And again, appreciate what you have around you and take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, kudos to staff, our IT, Heather, all department heads for what you're having to deal with. And I know it's a trying time. But as like everybody also said, we're going to get through this. We're going to do it together. I would like to just, um, what do you say? Recognize a few business. There's so, and so it's a trying time and there's so many people and businesses and schools and teachers and first responders and doctors and nurses who are doing just so much. And I just want to, and I'm going to, I'm going to forget somebody. So I apologize, but off the top of my head, uh, people, uh, groups or people or businesses in town, Rustic Living and Christie Mountain Sports for making, uh, masks. Um, McDonald's and Purple Pig Pizza, they're giving free meals and/or a slice of pizza to students at lunchtime during the school week. La Puente and Americor, they're handing out meals to people. The Boys and Girl, the Boys and Girls Club is still doing programming for kids and handing out, um, what do you say, games and things for them to do at home. I also want to recognize Woody's and Century Property Management for giving a free meal to first responders in that last week. Uh, so again, I've missed some, I've missed a few people and, and that, and I apologize, but we're going to do this together. Okay. And we don't, you know, it's always been said that we're like the last to be recognized in the state and, but the valley is going to do it together. So I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Hensley.
Heather, I want to thank you and our city family for all you're doing to keep this city, uh, together and, and putting yourselves in danger and stuff. And make sure that whatever, uh, safety equipment or whatever we need, whatever it costs, make sure we get that for our employees so they could feel safe in doing their jobs and not take anything home and, and jeopardize their own families. It's so important that, uh, that we stay safe and together and, and what, like, I think the mayor mentioned, money shouldn't be an object here. Safety is first and whatever we can do to keep everybody safe and, and keep our city moving forward. Uh, I, I thank you so much. Uh, another thing, thing too, and it's, it's a, it's a sad thing, but I hope that everybody has a, a happy Easter. I know it's not going to be the same. But, uh, I hope that we won't be able, we won't meet before then. So a happy Easter to everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Hensley.
So when you're the second to last to say anything, um, I'll say for what everybody said, ditto. And then I'm, I'll bring up a couple of different things. And so on a bright note, um, not that anything was not bright, but, um, I want to thank those who supported, uh, the nomination of Judy for the Sam Mamet Award uh, for CML. So I'm really excited. I think Judy really deserves it. She did such a great job. So I thought that was really exciting, something to sort of, um, highlights a positive thing. And then the other thing is, I will say, and I guess I'm putting a little plug in for CML is obviously as the president of the executive board, I've been actually really busy the last couple of weeks with a lot of different meetings and stuff. But it really showed me, I'll tell you, being part of that has showed me how strong we are in Colorado and that idea of having CML to be there as that support for all the municipalities. Um, anything from any conversations, whether it's city managers, attorneys, uh, city clerks, that type of thing. But even trying to have a handle on all of these moving pieces. And I think trying to really make sure everybody's getting all this information. So it's been kind of neat to be part of that. And that it funnels down and again, to make our city such a great city. So anyway, just making sort of a different twist on it.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley, and thank you for that different twist. Um, well, counsel, we've made a little history here today. I want to, uh, Heather, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I just, I, to tag on to what Liz said, I, I just think it's important for the public to understand. We're, we are not getting any kind of secret playbook. So when this stuff is rolled out at the state level, we are hearing it the same time as when our residents are hearing it. And we are scrambling to try to figure out what does this mean? And if it wasn't for the connectivity at the state level with CML for our partners and other communities, um, this would be extremely, extremely challenging because there is, I think a lot of times people think, well, we, we know more because we're on the inside or, or something like that. We don't. Um, we don't have any magical playbook that's telling us what to do and we're having to figure this out. And it's by working together that we're getting through this. And so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Um, and before I wrap it up, I just want to make sure that I'm mindful and that I'm not missing anyone that wanted to say a few words. It doesn't look like I see anyone with their hands up. Okay. Well, now I'll wrap it up if that's okay. Well, counsel, congratulations. Looks like we made a little history tonight by having our first official all Zoom meeting. And I must say, thanks to the IT team and entire staff, looks like everything, uh, went really well. So thank you for that. I just would like to add, um, to let the first responders know, Della, Connie, Donna, who, who works in the healthcare profession, along with all of the people who are in the healthcare industry. We really appreciate everything that you all are doing out there in the community, the shop owners who are taking a risk by still remaining open to, open to provide services to people. Uh, that's important as well. And we thank you for that. Also, we'd like to encourage counsel from, um, this day forward that we continue to try to do whatever we can within our power to support our local businesses and shop local, as well as whenever possible, try to promote, uh, businesses um, on your Facebook pages, if that's possible, or just get the word out and let people know, uh, where they can go to support our local businesses. I also like to thank, uh, the, our economic development specialist, Kathy. She and I have been on several Zoom phone calls out to where I think both of us have been zoomed out already. With all of the different meetings that are going on, uh, about the different funding sources and different, uh, programs that are available throughout our community, but also through the state. It's really important and, and we really appreciate, Kathy being a part of those phone calls as well. Um, the other thing is, is that um, as we move forward, I just like to encourage everyone that we continue to keep our, our social distances, uh, from, from people and try to do everything that we can within our power to, uh, prevent the spread of this virus. That's all I have for you all tonight. And, uh, That's all I have for you all tonight. And thank you all so very much. And just remember, it's the little things that you all do throughout our community that makes a big difference. So keep up the great work you're doing. Take care. Have a good evening. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.